Before we begin our business tonight, I think it's most appropriate that we have a moment to reflect on the work of Dr. Dan Balon in appreciation and thanksgiving for all that he did for our district to bring about our work in diversity, equity, and inclusion. It worked out, will continue on, and I'm sure that we'll all remember that it was his efforts that has moved us down this path to where we want to go. So let's take a few minutes of thanksgiving and memory for Dr. Dan Balon. Thank you. We have a ways to go and I'm sure that we will get there with the support that we've had from Dr. Dan Balon. Can we have our remote call, please?
Commissioners Cap and Jason.
Here.
Dave Davis. Linda Del Duco.
Here.
Jill Evans.
Here.
Rebecca Grimm.
Here.
Paul Hudson-Dell. Edward Fisher-Lucon Bell.
Here.
Adam Mass.
Here.
Bernie O'Rourke.
Here.
Keith Billings.
Here.
Ben Shapiro.
Here.
Patrick Callewell.
Here.
Barrett Woodard King.
Here.
Emily Lask.
Here.
Peter Lydon.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve our agenda? Commissioner Grimm, seconded by Commissioner O'Rourke. Are there amendments to our agenda? Commissioner Jason?
Yeah, I'd like to move the resolution for Irene Longe as soon as possible.
Okay, we'll do it right after we've approved our agenda. Commissioner Woodard King, would you like to make a motion that we just have a motion during the report of the board?
Oh, yes.
Regarding Dr. Balon?
Yes.
Okay. We will have a motion from Commissioner King, Woodard King, regarding Dr. Balon during the board report. Are there any other changes to the agenda? All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. I'd like to have a resolution here. We have a resolution under a board report regarding an employee, a former employee of our district. Would you please move that, Mr. Jason?
Please.
Okay. Moved and seconded by Commissioner O'Rourke. Thank you. A motion to a... Here we go. A move to, a resolution to, for the appreciation of, for Irene Longe retiring after 51 years of service to the district. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? With Irene Longe, please come forward.
So Irene, my question to you is how old is the desk that I just got? 10 years, 8 years? And it was only your second desk in 51 years? So basically after 40 years in the district, you're allowed a new desk? Irene, I really want to thank you for your 51 years in the district. I can't even imagine what my last 13 years would have been like without you. And your knowledge, your historical knowledge of the district is something that we hope to continue to tap into for quite a while. And I'm still going to teach you how to blog.
Irene, I want to read this resolution presented by the Burlington School of Commissioners. Whereas Irene Longe began her first day of employment with the Burlington School District on March 26, 1962. And whereas she has worked continuously in the business office as an accountant for over 40, over 50 years. And whereas she has consistently given priority to the financial management needs of the district. And whereas Irene has served faithfully 12 superintendent of schools. And whereas she has worked cooperatively with the administration and the board in the management of annual budgets. And whereas she has been instrumental in working with the city's finance office through the administration of 10 mayors. And whereas Irene exemplifies dedication to the Burlington School District. And therefore, be it resolved that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners officially recognizes the excellent services of Miss Irene Longe to the district of the city of Burlington and extends his appreciation for the work that she has done. Thank you very much. Irene does not wish to say anything, but out of respect for the lady cat, we wanted to make sure she got her recognition. We have a presentation from, are we going to start with VHS first?
Looks like it.
Okay.
Sorry Diana, he got up first.
And is this the, is Nick Burdard, our assistant principal at Burlington High School?
Got my cheat sheet here. Good evening. Thank you all for having me here tonight. I send greetings from a lot of teachers who said, "Oh, if you'd only told me a day sooner, I would have made it tonight." Because what I'm going to talk to you about really isn't about me at all, but it's about the amazing work that our ninth grade academy teachers have been doing and other teachers who've been associating with the academies this year. And I've been very privileged to be a part of a organic and very dramatic transformation that's happening right here in the high school. And what I want to share with you today are a couple of things that highlight some of the things that are making this experience. One thing that we're saying is part of our change here at the high school. We hope we'll continue to be a beneficial part of what we're doing in helping our students be connected, feel like they're learning 21st century types of skills. And also having our teachers feel like they have the support they need to be able to be the best teachers they can. So what's, on the screen right above the back here, this is our ninth grade website. And I'm just going to kind of orientate you to some things and then we're going to move through a presentation that highlights a very special day that took place to the ninth graders. But I just want to call your attention to this website. It's found off of the VHS website. And if you go to the departments, you'll find the ninth grade academy website. And there you'll find, as Paul's kind of scrolling across the top, a lot of different places where you can go in and see information that's available for students, for teachers, for parents, information about our iPad initiative, which you have so generously supported and continue to fund. You can see how that's been evolving over the years and see how our ninth grade academy is becoming a unique institution within the larger framework of the high school. As we scroll down, the future things I want to present tonight is our January 10 visit down to not just the Echo exhibit, because that really was only a part of what happened, but to a whole day. And this is the press release. Unfortunately, the background doesn't lend itself to you read well. But again, at your own, please take time, if you would, to take a look at what we put out to both the community and the press to encourage the involvement, which wound up bringing down, I believe, Genie, was it WCAX? They did a great piece that we had linked.
I think it was WPTZ.
WPTZ, so they, that was linked earlier, but we were able to get the Young Writers Project down. So it was a great, a great experience. Let me walk you through how it happened and evolved. Back around, well, probably a couple of months from this point, we were sitting around as a faculty and we had some folks from Echo that were in the cafeteria at one of our faculty meetings. And they left some brochures around about this upcoming race exhibit. It was, I think, at the time when no one was really thinking that far ahead of the next school year. We were so buried in what was happening in this school year as we always are. But a few teachers, among the teachers myself, took notice that this event was coming up. And Timmy Norris, one of our biology teachers, made a point when we got together in August to say, "This is a great experience for all of us to plan around, not just the science teachers, but all the teachers." And finding how this academy system was really going to work, how are we going to bring together the core teachers in math, science, history, and English to start to feel like they had something beyond just what we've been referring to as the silos that they live in, but really expand beyond that into some interdisciplinary thinking. That this event became the major touchstone for an interdisciplinary way of thinking for the year. And so on January 10, we took the entire ninth grade down to the waterfront. And what the teachers had decided was it wouldn't be enough, and those of you who are familiar with the race exhibit that was at Echo certainly know the space limitation. We weren't going to get 300 people into that space to have anything effective happen. So we decided to make a whole day of the event. And that day was taking the students through a series of experiences, not just to go into the Echo exhibit, but really to have them encounter firsthand this discussion of race, this idea of why, why is it important for us to talk about race in Burlington? And have community members be a part of that as well. Because part of this experience is connected to our NELI May and our Partnership for Change funding. So involving not just the students, but the community was a key thing. And beyond the teachers who are involved, we had our core teachers that were 12, we had our ELL support staff and ELL teachers there, we had people from central office, including Dan. We had over a dozen parents volunteer. We had some people right from central office be some of our speakers. So it really was an event that was more than just take the kids down to the Echo exhibit, but really experience something that day. So I want to take you to a video that the Partnership for Change has put together, and it will walk you through some of the highlights of that day.
Judaism is about, as far as I know, the only religion that has also considered a race.
People were wearing shirts and what they were known as, or I don't know, maybe people thought in that way, which means it has time periods, like 1987, and they're saying something like that.
We've got some good speakers, right?
As people talk about race in the real world, comments like this, "People of color are difficult to cope with." Again, it's kind of the open declaration of bias. So what will happen when it's time to pick teams for the championship?
The first three are photo editing software, photo editing apps. And the last one is one that allows you to write anything you want with these very fun apps. This is one that you slipped through. And notice that what she wrote on the top is, "The wisest person I know is, but future is never worth past." To illustrate that. Start to illustrate that. Do folks have questions before we start? And we're expecting that everyone will have something that they email to this address in 15 minutes.
So, I mean, that was a very small taste of what the whole experience was like. And I was, when I was asking Daniel Kowalwicz, who's the teacher that you saw on the crosswalk, same fellow leader, I said, "Dan, can you make it tonight?" He said, "I just have, I have another commitment I'd love to go, but I want you to say this for me." That was in the, all the years I've taught, one of the best days I've had as a teacher was doing that kind of experience. So I really wanted you to know that beyond just that day, it was an experience that brought the teachers together in a way that really exemplified what collaboration means across discipline lines. But it really made them rethink what their curriculum was going to be. So prior to January 10, we spent the time when we got back from the winter break preparing the students. In the science classes, they were working on genetics. The math classes, they were using the U.S. Census to do statistics. And in the humanities class, they were generating these questions. After, what happened was some very wonderful things. Classes found themselves continuing the conversation naturally, organically, as part of what their curriculum was. The English and history classes, for example, really started to see themselves in the small window of time as a humanities group. And they were looking at the idea of pluralism in general. Our history class exploring the idea of pluralism as they explore the world religions and world cultures the second half of the year. An English class really looking at some of the coming-of-age novels that are out there for young readers to look at, and the idea of the many voices that are part of that coming-of-age. They have over 20 different texts that they're using that brings together offers from different races, different backgrounds. So that wasn't planned. That wasn't something that back in September, they said, "We're going to do this." It came because they sat down to plan together and have this touchstone event to do. And that's opened the door to, I think, the students as well as the teachers to see the power of not having these kind of conversations in isolation or without a reference point, but making it part of what we do as part of our learning. It's what we do at VHS. It's what students think about at VHS. It's what the teachers teach at VHS. So I really encourage any of you who want to come in and see a ninth grade class in action. If you want to take a look at the website, if you have any questions, feel free to email me. But we're excited about the work that we're doing, and we're excited that we've been given the opportunity to do this work. So I really hope that you will take notice of the changes that are happening, and thank you again for the support that you've been providing.
Are there the list of 500 questions that the project's been able to do on their iPods? Are those being viewed?
We are, yeah. We're, we're still kind of calling everything together. Thank you, Paul, I forgot. So what's up here right now is, is the Tumblr account. I know it's tough to see in the way back, the screen up here. So when you saw Main Street landing, for example, they were reacting to that Dateline film and creating pictures of themselves with how they were feeling about the discussions that were happening that day. And if you scroll down, Paul, there's a variety of reactions that you could go cruise and take a look at. And, I mean, some of them are shocking in their honesty, but these are young people. That's what they do. They mean, they're honest. They, they tell you what they're thinking at the time. But to answer your question, Commissioner Evans, I think at this point, there's a lot of stuff that we're truly, we're trying to cull down. We're going to a, a conference in March that we're featuring VHS as part of this conference. And so that's kind of our target date as that everything kind of pulled together. The Young Writers Project, it was part of this, they took over 50 different interviews and stories from the kids, and they're in the process of editing that down to a podcast. So I think when things are a little bit more manageable, we do want to kind of present a package that you can take a look at. Hopefully, we can use the templates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Diana, do you introduce your colleagues from the early, early education?
From the high school now to the early education world. So I have with me tonight Erid Coughlin and Ilois Semenjer, who are two of our early childhood special educators that, thank you, that are part of our program. I'm Diana Langston, the director of the early ed program. And tonight, what we thought we'd like to do with you is share a little bit about the value of early education and then talk to you a little bit about some facts about our early ed program. And Paul's getting up our questions, do you two agree? Yep. Ready?
What if you could take action to reduce crime, improve health and education levels, increase family incomes and state revenues, and improve the quality of life in communities throughout your state? Where would you begin? Science tells us that we may find the solutions to these complex social problems in early childhood when the architecture of your brain begins to form. Brain architecture evolves over time and shaped by experiences starting in the earliest years of life. The most important experiences come from the environment of relationships that interact with each child, parents, extended family, and caregivers of all kinds. But serious adversity early in life can disrupt healthy brain development. Both brain architecture and behavior are increasingly difficult to change as individuals grow. So what happens early matters for a lifetime. Now imagine you can take action to improve the lives of children and the quality of life in this community. Where and when would that action be most effective? The links between policy, parenting, and brain architecture become much more clear when we can see how formative events in family and community environments affect child development. For example, policymakers want to make their communities safer or improve children's learning or reduce the cost of chronic health problems. A child raised in this environment may experience lower levels of stress and more opportunities for learning. That leads to sturdy brain architecture and a healthy stress response system, which prepare the child to achieve higher levels of literacy and other skills early in life. Later leads to improved school achievement and decreased dropout levels. Positive early experiences can also reduce levels of obesity, diabetes, and heart disease. Increased health and education levels can have positive effects across society, like reduce crime and increase income and tax revenues. Policies affect both individuals and communities. So making wise choices that support early brain development can improve health, behavior, and learning throughout life.
So with that blue piece about the importance of early childhood and early childhood education, we'd like to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing in our district around this area.
So looking at this slide, you'll notice the blue bubble in the middle talks about what services we provide and where we provide those services. So screenings, assessments, early education services is what we provide. The different places and locations and organizations that we provide them to is really quite diverse. So if we take a look at the Burlington School District programs, those that are a part of this district, at the top is the program located at the Ira Allen Building. That program provides services for children with intensive special needs. Those are children who need interventions that require specialized instruction to help those students meet the needs that they need. We do that in a variety of different ways. We have three classrooms in, that run three days, three half-days a week. We also collaborate with Head Start, and its efforts has served 33 children at that location. We also have a program at Flynn, it's at Smith right now, and we serve 28 children at Factory School. Then there's one at the Integrated Arts Academy, where currently we serve 30 children from the Wheeler neighborhood, if you will. And then there's one at the Sustainability Academy, which is a collaborative along with Head Start and Shelby Farms.
Are those preschoolers as well?
And those are all three of those. We also provide what we call clinic services, and those are services where families can come, and it is at the Ira Allen Building. They can come with their children, work with an interventionist, and that could be a teacher, it could be a speech-language mythologist. Also, we're bringing in a physical therapist, occupational therapist, depending on their needs, to work with the child, but also work with the family to help them gain the skills necessary to help support the children in the home environment as well. When we were watching that previous clip, the idea of the brain architecture, that's really our piece in making sure that what we do is get in there and help either prepare or work with and mold that architecture in a way that allows children to enter our schools more ready to take on that learning environment.
In addition to that, we have our Act 62 partnerships. Right now, we are currently in partnership with 25 different center-based programs and three home-based programs, serving about 251 children. At those sites, there are 11 sites where we go in and serve students who are eligible for essential early education services. And five of the sites we go into are not part of our partnership, but they are within Burlington, and we do go in there and serve children who are eligible. Along with that, we have a collaboration with our partners, with these 28 partners we meet with quarterly. And we sit down with them, we look at assessments that they do for us for the children, we collaborate around their needs, we've offered professional development for them, again, trying to meet the needs of all of our children in the different sites that they are within and outside of Burlington. that they are within and outside of Burlington.
So as Eric mentioned, we serve the full range of children's development from the ages of three to five in our program. So we have children who would be considered typically developing, we have children who would be considered at risk for difficulties in school due to any number of factors, be it socioeconomic developmental delay, some kids who have medical needs. Any child who is identified at risk can be served by our program. And we also serve children who have identified special education needs. And again, you know, referring back to that video, early intervention is very powerful intervention because we know that the brain is really plastic at that point, and it's the best time to intervene in order to help children learn the skills they need to learn and to become more successful. A very, very, very important part of our program are our parent-teacher partnerships. And we work very closely with parents because I think our program has a really strong philosophy that parents are their children's first and most important teachers, and the relationships that they make with their parents are with them throughout their whole lives, and we can help. But their parents are their first important teachers. So a large part of our program involves having parent conferences. For our children who have identified special education needs, we have frequent team meetings with parents where we discuss their programs and provide follow-up services. We have parent meetings, and we do parent training on topics that parents identify are important to them in terms of helping their children be more successful. We'll do home visits as the need arises to help families manage things that they need to manage in the home to help their kids be more successful. And therefore, we do, and parent conferences as usual. So that's our parent-teacher conferences. So just to finish up, take-home message from our presentation is that early life experiences are built into our brains and our bodies, for better or for worse, and they affect us for the rest of our lives. The ability to change, one's brain decreases over time. We know that from brain research, it's easiest to shape the brain when children are young. There's this very interesting graphic that they show where your brain development goes up as a child and then it goes down as you get older. So we're on the downward slope of that. And, sorry, but it's true. And this is a quote from Todd Grindal from the Harvard Center on the Developing Child, and he says, "The quality of children's early experiences has a profound impact on their lifelong academic achievement, economic productivity, and physical and mental health." And that's what we do in our program, and we're very passionate about it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Evans?
Thank you.
So where does the, how are kids identify for possibly getting into the program? Like where is that identification coming from?
Do you mean for special ed services or just in any of them?
Just in general.
Okay. So we post in our school newsletters, Jeanne always posts for us on Front Porch Forum through other families that we know. We put out ads that we have preschool programs, and we are taking applications for anyone that's interested in our program. We typically find that once we have families in the program through word of mouth or just having their own siblings and other children, we tend to have a waiting list for all of our sites. So we first look there. Sometimes physicians, families, daycare providers, parents will call us and say we have concerns about certain children and their development, and we think they need to be seen by us for screening to see if they need some intervention. And so we have staff who also does that, and then we'll see if they are in a program or not. And if they're not, we look at our programs in all of our different sites, and we try to figure out where do they live, what program is a good match for what this child needs and what the parent needs. So we have options like that. And then if there are families who need a full-day program because of our partnerships, we have been able to contact our partnership programs and say, "We need a full-day placement for this family, and would you have any openings that you would consider?"
Commissioner Matheson?
Do we track or take a look at how the kids who have come through our programs, I guess probably in particular the triple A, do as they go through school through the rest of the years?
That's a really good question. As of last year, the state has now mandated that we do an assessment on children at least twice a year. So we do an assessment by October and then at the end of the year. Last year was the first year that all of us did that, both our Burlington School District programs and any program that's a partner with us, we've mandated that. So in the second year of this collecting of data, we've had one meeting with Paul, and we have some other work that we need to do to figure out how we take this data and enter it into our own school system so that we can track the progress that they make from their preschool, and then look at what that looks like as the children progress through kindergarten through second grade. So it's in the process.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Diana Langston, Eric Kaufman, Eileen Symonter. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the support and input.
We're going on to a public comment. At this time, the board welcomes comments and questions from the public, including staff and students. We encourage you to express your opinions on matters concerning any subject relating to public education in general and the operation of the Burlington School District in particular. The board is very interested in your opinion expressed during the public comment period. However, this is not a time to engage members of the board in conversation or debate.
Good evening. I am Ruben Jackson, as I assume you all know. I'm going to merge suggestions with a brief personal reflection, because I think the reflection is relevant to my point. About a week ago, I was walking through the hallways here, as you know, I'm a part-time teacher here at VHS. And I was aware of something I thought I knew intellectually but did not fully understand, which was that Dr. Dan Balon's presence for me in this district was more than a set of training wheels, it might have been all the wheels on the bike. Now, of course, you can say this is about his grieving, he's being upset. But it is no small thing, even in 2013, to have to deal with, I'm not talking about demographic loneliness, the isolation of trying to be a committed teacher, just as everyone who works here at CP Smith or wherever, and being treated like an ornament on a tree, or someone who is here solely because of the way he looks. And Dan, among other things, and other colleagues within this building as well, let me be clear, made me feel normal, that, you know, I wasn't like the guy in the Jackie Robinson story. Look, oh, black people teach it much. So why am I saying this? I understand now after some reflection that my skill set, and when I say skill set, I am not referring to my ability to do a good job as a teacher. I'm not referring to that. I think that my background and experience is probably not the best match for the way things are going. And I think it's, you know, it's like couples, they fight and they fight, and you think, hmm, you know, somebody needs to let the cat go somewhere. But before I close, I was thinking about something, the title of the superintendent's report, diversity being our gift and our future. So here's the gift I would like to give to teachers of color who might come down the pike. I would like them to have the gift of, and knowing you cannot legislate morality, an environment that is truly as equitable as possible. Conversations are nice, I know that's the word for everything. Something has to be done. This helicopter is circling and circling and circling. My principal even admitted during a conversation last week, she said, "This is really bad here," and she agreed. So I wanted to say that because I don't want you to think it's just some little age hackhead going off about this. I would say either do something about it or stop talking about it, because it's, there is a reason teachers of color leave this place. And, yeah, people have different decisions, it's not good, it's just not good. The other gift I would like people to have is just, well, I guess I'll just repeat that just to be normal. I revel in the conversations I have with colleagues about this student or that student. But the disparity is so great. Now, again, I know you all have things to do, but this is no joke, this is no joke. You know, I was naive when I came here. And it's one thing, slogans are one thing, and I have no disrespect, something has to be done if you're serious about it. If you're not serious about it, do something else. But the last thing is that, I knew what I was going to say, this, you cannot profess equity and blacklist and/or alienate people who are interested in achieving same. That pattern has been discussed in the press, it exists, it's just, I don't want to see somebody, I've said this, you know, city council, I don't want to see people go through this. I don't want them to think it's 1947. A colleague of mine said, "Boy, the only black people you could talk to about this are either dead or in nursing homes." And I don't want that. So like the Beatles say, "I don't want to spoil a party, so I'm gone." But I hope this is, I'm not questioning your sincerity necessarily, but something should be done if you really care about it. If, if being the key word. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is David Cohn, I live here in Burlington. My older son was able to attend South Burlington High School through school choice. In light of the new changes in the law, my younger son, who is in eighth grade, we're hoping would have the same opportunity, and was checking with the board to see where your stance is, and are you going to continue to pay the receiving school? I know in the paper yesterday, you said you were going to allow 10 students to attend other schools. Does that mean you're going to pay for those 10 students as well?
David, we have not discussed that as a board. Could you give us, could you give us your email address or some information so we could get back to you on that?
Certainly.
Okay, this is something that we have not discussed.
At all.
At all, no.
Even though I, by my understanding, February 1st was the deadline for you guys to notify by law those that had applied for school choice and where your stance was.
If I may, hi David. We have made the decision, again, as you pointed out, and it was in the paper, that we will continue to allow 10 students to leave each year, which is what we have done for a total of 40 students. The issue of pay is different. Basically, under the school choice law, we no longer, money no longer follows the student. And so what Mr. Pillsbury is referring to is that the board needs to have a philosophical discussion on whether Burlington monies are going to follow a student to another school, and that would be a finance committee agenda item. That discussion hasn't happened, but the student can still go. So the other side of the question is, will South Burlington accept a student if money doesn't follow the student, and they also have to set caps. So it's kind of a two-way process. Your child can certainly apply for school choice. It is a lottery system, as you know, South Burlington has indicated that they don't have much room, is the way that they've indicated they're doing it, that was in the paper as well.
They have plenty of room, it's the fact that other school boards...
They want money to follow the child.
Exactly.
Right, and as you're aware from the article, that's a difficult discussion for school districts across the state.
Yeah, I'm sure that your topic will come before the finance committee meeting at the end of February, so that we can have that discussion. This is something that board has not, when I read it yesterday, it was the first time I heard about that.
And when is the school board going to make the decision so families can play in accordingly?
Commissioner Matheson? Go ahead.
I would have to say it's going to have to be finance committee, and we are once again engaged in a debate, which I don't know, I mean, I think that getting Mr. Cohn's information and passing the information back to him is what we should be doing at this time of our meeting.
Yes, we need to have the contact information from you, if you could do that for us, please. Thank you, and we'll get back as soon as we've had our chance to have our discussion and make a decision.
And does finance committee know when that decision's going to be made?
Finance committee meeting is fourth Tuesday of every month. And once again, I think we just need your contact information.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Terry? Thank you.
We have gained a lot, to reflect on the comments tonight, we have gained a lot of information in this short period of time, and it's something that the board needs to think about and reflect on. And I'm sure that diversity and equity will be discussing things they heard tonight, and finance will be discussing the topic that we just heard about. So that gives us something to continue to work on. Under board report, I wanted to make sure that the public understood that tomorrow they can begin to vote in the March town meeting, they can go to City Hall and pick up a ballot and vote in the city elections. They can also request an absentee ballot, and so, what's it called, absentee voting, I guess it's called absentee voting has started. The vote itself will be on, at your normal ward voting place on Tuesday, March 5th. Commissioner King, do you have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion regarding the passing of Dr. Danielle Garma Balon.
Would you like to read the motion?
Yes.
And then we can have a second, and then if your comments...
A resolution honoring the life and work of Dr. Daniello Garma Balon, educator and activist whose passion and dedication to issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and sense of urgency regarding issues of social justice, leaves a great legacy for the Burlington School District and community. As a school board and district, we pledge to continue his work with the same sense of passion, dedication, and urgency.
Is there a second for that motion? Commissioner Evans, are there comments or questions?
I just have to say, in regards to what Ruben Jackson said, I think that's an example of where we can't just let his comments sit there. You know, I realize we can't have an exchange with people during a public comment, but I hope that we listen to, I hope we're getting a huge brain dump from Ruben Jackson, you know, and we are going to listen to what he has to say as we continue our work on the Diversity and Equity Committee and with the plan.
All who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? This motion will be given to Nikki Fuller and Henry Sparks to give to the family of Dr. Dan Balon. We now have a report from the superintendent. Commissioner Matheson, did I miss something?
Oh, she is unable to make it, but you can still pass the resolution. She, yeah, she'd like you to continue doing it.
Okay, would you like me to have, okay.
Here's the actual.
Okay, this is, I will read the motion, then I will need a second. Okay. To Bonnie Poe, presented by the Burlington Board of School Commissioners. Whereas Bonnie Poe has served public education for 38 years and joined the Burlington Schools in 1997 when she became Principal at Edmunds Middle School, and whereas she has served as Director of Special Services for the past seven years, and whereas Bonnie has consistently given priority to the students' needs of the district, and whereas she has worked collaboratively with all members of the district staff to ensure inclusion as a priority in this district, and whereas Bonnie has increased assistive technology for students throughout the district, and whereas she has been instrumental in leading the district in the implementation of PBIS. in leading the district in the implementation of PBIS, and whereas Bonnie has been an essential part of the leadership team of the Burlington School District, and therefore, be it resolved that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners officially recognizes the excellent services of Ms. Bonnie Poe to the district and extends its appreciation for the work that she has been, she has done. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner, um, Deladuka, any comments or questions? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now, superintendent's report? Commissioner Mattson?
Yeah, just one thing, it sort of was connected to the, maybe to the, um, voting timeline. Just want to remind everybody that the city is doing a redistricting event, and they are looking, and they've brought people in from all the different wards. I would say that if you have views on this, um, make sure you talk to your ward representative to the redistricting, um, group, because, you know, if we are to have any input, or if we were thinking of making any sorts of changes to what and how, uh, commissioners are elected, it would have to, it should probably come through this process and well, as well, because it would also require a similar change to the city charter.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report?
Right.
I also just want to comment briefly on the loss of Dan Belon in the district, and I want to reiterate for anyone who's listening, the board, our administration, our teachers, and our community, that the work that we are doing will continue. Dan has left a great legacy. He has had a great impact on the schools, on the students, on the community at large. Um, I want to thank Nikki Fuller and, um, Sparks, Sparks, did I get that right this time? For really stepping in, or volunteering to step in to, um, some empty shoes and pick up pieces to help us get through the spring, along with Linda Walsley and Paul Irish, who really took over the equity inclusion report at the very end, when he was expecting to hand it off to Dan and needed to finish it. Um, Sparks and Nikki, Sparks in particular, has taken over the equity council. Sparks and Nikki and I attended last week. We are asking equity council members to step up in the role of professional development for the remainder of the spring. It is not our intention to replace the position this spring, but instead to look at the expertise that exists now within our community and within our faculty to help us finish our, continue working on our plan this spring, and then as we close out the planned diversity our gift in our future, we'll have a better, clearer direction of where we'd like that position to go for next year with the development of a new plan. It, it has been very difficult for, um, all of us, not just the workload, but just personally, and just the conversations that play in the head of people, myself included, on a regular basis when things come up, and, and you just hear Dan's voice right there. But I, I have, um, absolute confidence that we're going to, we are continuing to move forward and have every intention of creating the type of environment that Ruben Jackson just spoke of. In the diversity and equity committee meeting that did not happen on January twenty-ninth, um, there is a diversity and equity update report, um, from you. In fact, within that report, Nikki Fuller speaks to some of the issues that Ruben Jackson brought up, some of the climate issues and difficult issues for the adults in the district and retention issues. Um, so I might refer you to that report. It is posted, and it'll come back when we have the next meeting. The ECHO exhibit has ended, and we did have Washington Consulting Group here one more time before it ended for really a, a, an incredible three days, with the first day being administrators, equity council, equity team together, um, doing work together and planning forward. And then the next two days, we got another forty people, I think, through the Washington Consulting Group training. Washington Consulting also has contacted us and, and will be helping to fill in some of the gap this spring as we're planning our moving forward. But as the ECHO exhibit ends, the community has opened seats taken, an exhibit at Burlington City Arts, very different type of exhibit, um, but I do encourage you to go and, and look at the exhibit, read, read what's with each of the art pieces. There was an article in the paper recently where one of the artists dedicated her work to Dan Belon. Um, but it really opens the conversation even broader, and I just recommend that you take a look at that. The equity inclusion report, um, as I indicated, Paul has taken that over at the very eleventh, well, Paul was in it all the way, but instead of handing it over at the eleventh hour, he's kept it. And as a result of, of recent events, we have postponed its release to the March meeting. Right now, we're in the process of finalizing what needs to be, um, the data piece is final, but we're finalizing the report itself, which was the part that Dan was taking over, and making sure that the rollout to the faculty is happening. So I anticipate having a presentation on that at the March, um, meeting. Any questions on diversity and equity before I move on? Partnership for Change update, we are in the process of interviewing six candidates for the director of Partnership for Change. I've been told that one is in the country and five are not. We had forty-nine candidates apply, thirty-six of them were viable. We have eleven people on the hiring team from the different stakeholders across both Burlington and Winuski, and those eleven on the hiring team are going to follow the entire process all the way through. We anticipate the larger community interview on March seventh, and you'll hear more about that, because on the date, if it's March seventh or soon after that, you'll be invited to be part of that process to meet, um, the candidates for director. The February second community learning conversation in this room, in this cafeteria, was incredibly successful. Um, I know that several of you were able to attend at least part of it. We had over three hundred people from Burlington and Winuski participating. We, one, one of the things that Washington Consulting has taught us is to pan, pay attention now and look around at your environment, and one of the things that we panned is that we were very successful at getting new American communities here, not as successful at getting generational poverty or, um, our traditional African-American families here. So we're aware of that. We are proud of the fact that we were able to, uh, bring in new American families and accommodate them, but we recognize that in that particular large setting, it was not very conducive for some of our other populations. However, we have had thirty-five smaller learning conversations, with five more planned right now, um, that were taking place with students in houses, in families' homes, in local, um, local places where we know that we can capture different audiences. And those conversations are going to continue. We are, the primary question for these conversations is what do our graduates need in order to be successful after high school? And that addresses, um, that, that's the work that we're doing to address the board goal of setting graduation, um, expectations for Burlington High School graduates, and we, we have, we're in the process of working through all the input that we got, and we'll be spending the spring with the intention of identifying five to seven overarching proficiencies before the end of the school year, with a school development institute for teachers happening in June towards those proficiencies. So, we're moving along very well, and you'll be hearing more about that. Finally, under Partnership for Change, I just wanted to comment that Adam Urbansky, the union reformer that Nellie May has funded, is coming back to talk to the Burlington and Winuski, um, union leadership and administration, um, in March, the week of March twelfth, to continue to help us think outside the box in our work and moving, um, education forward as, as a combined team. Any questions on Partnership for Change?
I have a question back to first, and after you have completed them, then we are forth.
Okay, okay, I'll continue, and then we'll come back to it then.
What was that March date for the larger community conversation?
Uh, looks like it's March seventh, is what we anticipate right now. Um, I note that I arrived back from Japan on March sixth at midnight, so we'll see whether I'm awake for it or not. But right now, they're looking at March seventh. Um, you do have updated enrollment and kindergarten registration numbers. We are over four thousand students now, we've officially passed the mark. Registration for kindergarten does officially close mid-March. What closing means is that that's the cutoff, at which point we start placing students in their choice of, you know, what they've asked for for kindergartens. Of course, we continue to take kindergarten registrations, but after mid, mid-March, it becomes a first-come, first-served placement, um, setup. So if you know anybody with kindergarten-aged children, please encourage them to register now. You can go into a local school, you can stop in central office, the forms are on the website, but please get your registration in. In the principal, yes?
I'm just, this has come up before in, in anticipation of some of the younger children in the south end and what sort of that bubble is going to look like.
Yeah.
But I'm looking just even at current fifth grade.
Yes.
And north end versus south end, and it looks like it goes ballpark. Some of that depends on where magnet school, magnet school students live, but it looks like there's a potential for Edmonds to go one forty-seven and Hunt to go one seventeen for sixth grade.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering
Yes.
The redistricting lines were discussed in anticipation of the younger bubble, but that may be sooner?
We, um, yes, we do, generally, we do that administratively, and we sit down together, Hunt and Edmonds and, and the superintendent, and we look at where our families, what, we run a report, and we adjust the lines and notify families this spring. It is, Edmonds is overly full. And now that Edmonds Elementary is eighteen classrooms, that will continue to be a high number, and Champlain next year will go back to three kindergartens with a smaller fifth grade coming in. Flynn, however, um, has a smaller fifth grade, but that will continue to increase. So I do see the south end numbers increasing slightly over time, uh, north end, over time, but, um, we will have to revisit the lines for that sixth grade.
Looking at the, the numbers, and I see the current fourth grade class at Champlain being about twelve students more than the current fifth grade class, so that's going to make it, didn't you say that's, you said that next year's fifth grade class is going to be smaller? I may have misunderstood what you said.
I may not have said it correctly.
We are going back to three kindergartens.
Right.
We have three fifth grades and two fourth grades, is that correct? I don't have it in front of me.
It's not a big deal with it. The only thing we have two of in Champlain is K and two F D.
Right. We remain large, in other words.
Remain large?
Yeah.
And is there going to be, do we know, I know there's the potential with some of the, the safety redesign to, to claim a new classroom in Champlain?
There is the potential to claim a new classroom.
That's a very exciting potential. It, it's a potential that will cost us two hundred thousand dollars, so it's not happening for next fall. But it is something that ITC will be discussing, um, as we go forward, because if we move the front offices, Champlain up to the front lobby area, then we can actually capture one to two classrooms or a classroom and some office space.
The other interesting numbers I'm just seeing is that, with the exception of Smith, every school has a larger fourth grade class than fifth grade class. I mean, it's just, numbers are bigger in fourth grade than fifth grade, so sixth grade in two years is going to be even more complicated than sixth grade next year.
Yes, it is.
Is it okay if I move on? In the principal searches, Integrated Arts Academy is in its finalist stage. I am not bringing a name to you tonight, I will bring a name to you in March, and I'll get you information in the next, I anticipate in the next week of who I anticipate bringing forward. Um, we had a good turnout of both parents and teachers participating in the process. Um, feedback that I've gotten from people is that we had an excellent candidate pool this year, um, some real high-quality folks coming through the finalist stages. Sustainability Academy is just beginning. I haven't yet announced the names to the teachers and parents, so I'd rather not hear, but you'll be hearing that, uh, probably within the next twenty-four hours, the finalist candidates that we will be interviewing at Sustainability Academy. The Sustainability Academy interviews will be taking place March thirteenth and fourteenth. If you'd care to participate in the six fifteen community, um, interviews, you are more than welcome to do so. And then I anticipate finalizing that one before the end of March, if all goes well.
Is parent interview part of the community interview?
Yes, okay, yes, same thing, parent and community interview. Um, I have been doing some work around legislative advocacy now that the, the legislature is back in session, and, um, you know, I just, I have to say that we are extremely fortunate in Burlington to have legislators who absolutely believe in schools and children. And they are a pleasure to talk to, they are a pleasure to work with, um, they are very interested in what we are doing. I spent a day last month in the State House with Vermont Superintendent's Association speaking about education quality vision work and, um, testifying in both House Education and Senate Education. What's fun for me about talking about the education quality vision work is that we are living it here. Um, in fact, when I was in House Education, and they were saying, what does it mean to develop proficiencies? I was able to say, well, come Saturday, and we'll show you. And several of them did. So, we're really, uh, on the cutting edge of the work that's happening in Vermont and leading the way. There's a great deal of interest in what we're doing in Burlington, down in the State House. Uh, we have begun some discussions around the ADM funding for English-language learners. I also hear talk about discussions about changing the preschool ADM funding slightly, adjusting it upward. There, I've started some conversations with city lobbyists about the school construction moratorium and where school security needs fall into that, and so we're starting to have those discussions as well. As Alan pointed out, and I'm sorry, Alan, I haven't had the time to follow up on that, but a lot of the governor's speech, we're doing here, actually, and I'd still like to follow up on that, point by point, but the governor is advocating in his education agenda, such as the preschool for all children, and, um, we're, we're doing those things here. And I think that it would be good to get that message out and, and get that word out, and I appreciate it, Alan, that you brought that forward, and I haven't had a chance to follow up on it.
But we were also, uh, he's advocating for those students who get reduced price on lunches. We actually
We already, that's another one, yes. He, he advocates, um, the governor is suggesting that reduced lunch be eliminated, and it's for everybody who's on reduced lunch, get free, we did that two years ago.
He's advocating for stems.
He's advocating for stems, we're talking about it. Um, yeah, pretty much. We're doing some great stuff. So Jill, do you want to ask your question about diversity and equity?
I just wanted to know, um, about how many teachers, teachers, all the way.
Uh, we did, thank you for asking. Uh, we did, um, sponsor a T for teachers of color within the district. Nikki had, um, pulled that together, and Nikki Sparks and I attended. I believe we had seven teachers of color present. You think it was eight? Nikki believes it was eight. And, um, you know, heard, heard a variety, it was an opportunity for the teachers get to know each other, because they're in several different schools, to let me hear what their concerns and questions are. Um, and we had one teacher from Flynn Elementary share a, a book that her students had created, um, on the topic of race, that I would like to read at the next Reading Dead Racism session that I go to. It was really well-done, third-grade book, very well-done. So sharing some tools and, and resources with each other. I thought that it was an excellent opportunity to meet and, and hear some of the concerns. Um, we had teachers there who have been in the district, I think Sherhang has been here fifteen years. We had teachers who have been in the district just this year. So it was, it was a nice variety of teachers who had attended.
Well, in terms of content, Nikki also shared in her report that she's greatly
Concerned about retention.
Not quoting you. The climate for teachers of color, and so I'm wondering, content-wise, what's, what is some of what you heard, is what Ruben said, something that other teachers?
Well, I'm not sure if it's all that I heard there, but we are concerned in general about the climate for teachers of color, and very honestly, the climate in general. We're, um, you know, as we start to shine the light on some of the work that we're doing, we are concerned with disrespectful adult behavior in general, and as Ruben pointed out, teachers of color in particular are, are feeling, um, that isolation or disrespect. So it wasn't necessarily about the T, it's about in general. And to that end, just add one more piece of that. To that end, we are right now, um, working on developing actually a code of conduct and, um, procedures for following that code of conduct to start to change. We, we do feel strongly that we need to be focusing on the adult climate in order to affect the student climate as we're, as we're moving forward, so we're kind of shifting, looking at focuses that way. Yeah.
I just wanted to offer a question. I think it's a significant step that you're saying, the things you're saying right now, and that we're having this kind of open conversation, and, um, I just think it, it certainly, for years, we've heard things like, we want action now, but the, the fact that you're willing to talk about it so openly and are addressing it is, is what's needed, and people could say, well, we needed it years ago, that doesn't help where we're at now. The fact that you're saying it now is really, um, very helpful, and, and I hope that the expectation creates the opportunity for, for the principals in the schools to demonstrate that same kind of leadership and say, let's acknowledge the fact that we have climate issues in our school, and, um, and that it's okay to talk about it openly, because I think that, I think that that's kind of, there has to be a place for people to talk about what's going on. Because I think that, I think that that's kind of, there has to be a place for people to talk about what's going on that's safe and respectful. And your willingness to be the leader in talking about that, I hope, can create a change in how the employees of the district are experiencing their work life. Because we've talked a lot about the climate for students, and the position that I've come from is that we need role modeling. And so if faculty, if administrators, if teachers are not role modeling the kind of behavior that they expect with each other, how do they expect it to happen with students? So just a note to say thank you for being so willing to have that conversation.
Thank you. And I am.
Anybody else? Okay, Commissioner Mattson with a finance committee report.
Sure. We held our finance committee report this evening, just before this meeting. And there were any of a number of discussion items. We had no items that we're bringing together. Often, I would just have you refer to minutes, but there won't be any, so I will talk through what items we did talk about.
I have a question about the meeting, because I didn't come to it, because it says canceled finance committee meeting.
I had sent you a note last week, Meredith, and told you.
No, I knew it was to replace the.
I know, the note was wrong, because that was wrong, but it was on the website at five o'clock. And yes, it was, when they shifted it over here.
No, I had planned on coming tonight, but then I, when I went to look at the board docs, it said canceled.
As of this morning, it was on the 29th, so I guess it got refreshed incorrectly.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
That's why I wasn't there.
Okay.
But I also was at CCTV, so.
So you still wouldn't have been there?
Well, I would have come late.
We ended up finishing by six o'clock anyway.
Oh, so it doesn't matter.
The, there are many documents online to take a look at. We discussed the financial report. I think that the 2004, the financial report, right now with Munis, we have targeted a few items, we're asking people to keep, to take a look at, and for the February meeting to discuss places where we look like we may be spending in a deficit. Also, the 2014 annual report data is on there. That's the information that goes into the books that have just, I think they are printed at this point, or will be printed. The next item we talked about was, well, we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the budget vote plan. Those were things where we've been out to NPAs, we've been working with Burlington Friends of Education. A couple of documents, though, are out on the, on board docs. There are also a number of documents related to the 2012 budget deficit. There was a request from the constituent for more information. So we put together the various documents that we were presented with as the board over the past year, as well as some notes about those deficits. So if you have questions on that, you can refer, basically, the full paper trail is on board docs again for that. Three items where we had overspent last year that we did get some review from the administration with the 2020 plan, the special education budget review, and the substitute teacher report. So those are the things we talked about. If anybody has further questions, certainly have questions now, bring them up. Or if you want to take a look, there were a fair number of documents on the agenda.
Any questions, Commissioner Mattson?
I guess I would just add, away from the finance department, I've been Ward Six MPA, certainly, last month I was at Wards Two and Three. I will be out at Ward Four and Seven. I know Keith and Jeannie will be doing one, and I think. For five, so, you know, just make sure you're talking to people. If questions or concerns come up about the budget, I have not been hearing a lot of, I have not been hearing a lot from the community. I've been talking with a few different areas where we've had some reductions in force, where we're looking to reduce, not say in force, but reductions in spending within the district. And, you know, I think what I've seen within the district, folks know that this is what is in the budget and are looking at it as a way to, you know, taking it on and not really just sort of, they've been responding in a productive fashion to this.
Any other comments, questions, Commissioner Truitt?
Everybody's out there, you know, tasing this back to the locals, but I just want to, in particular, thank you, Alan, for making yourself available around the city. It's above and beyond, and a little human shieldy, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan. Anybody else? Christopher Holliday, Policy and Advocacy Committee.
Yeah, we had a really, I can read the minutes, I'll read it super fast. We had a good discussion last meeting, looking at some branding for the district as a way to really kind of get out our message, talking about some consultants, a variety of ideas. We can talk about that in more detail if anyone wants to talk to me about it. The one motion that we have today, and this is at the end of, well, I don't know if we actually have, I don't know if we have the motion to move up. But we had a really good discussion, thanks to Emily and Peter, on the role of our youth representatives. And I think this was important to do. And we moved to have students vote on all, unless they choose to abstain, on everything that we do here. It would be a non-binding vote, it would be recorded separately. But we felt, and we being kind of everyone around the table, that that was an important step to make it more than, we really want to encourage the student voice, that this was a way to make it a little bit more formalized. It wouldn't affect the outcome of any votes, and I don't think we would have the, you know, the power to actually make it a binding vote. But, so I'm going to go ahead and move to, do we, do you want to do this? Or do we want to wait for all of, Peter is going to be writing up kind of a general statement for the draft policy on the role of the youth members. That was one of the things that came out. I think we can move the vote today, the draft policy.
I think we can move the vote. Peter actually called right before the meeting. The city got called into work, and he's curious about the result of the vote. So I guess we can move the vote.
We will move the vote. So I guess we'll move to create a policy, I guess we'll need to create a policy, just move to allow student representatives.
To have student representatives vote as non-binding.
Vote for all, general school board.
Actually, you could say move to have student reps have non-binding, non-binding votes. Is that messy?
And Krista Chason is just waiting to second.
So, yes, we'll move to have student representatives, to enfranchise student representatives with a non-binding vote, enfranchise something non-binding, for all school board motions.
Commissioner Evans?
Question?
Go ahead.
Does that have to be in policy or something? It seems like there's supposed to be something in writing that we're.
We don't have a policy now, actually.
We're going.
Well, in terms of board makeup or anything, student reps aren't mentioned somewhere where you would talk about votes?
So this is where I was, why I was having a hunch a little bit here, is that we also have, Peter is going to be drafting a larger policy, looking at the general goal of how student reps join the board, what their goals are going to be, all of that. There is no policy at all in this, so this is a new policy we would be adding, but we wanted to move the vote.
So is there a?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Is there a way to, maybe it's not a, it's a, maybe it's a testing the will of the board to see if they like this idea, and then Peter would go ahead and put that in, the policy on the role of student reps on the board, knowing that he's already got the support of the board for that.
And the policy would come back to us for first and second reading?
Right.
So he doesn't do all that work, and then, you know, shut it down?
Right.
I'm sure he'd appreciate it.
Commissioner Truitt?
So then, would this franchise be in effect upon, you know, if this vote, if this motion passes? Or not until a policy is in place? Because if it's not until a policy is in place, then the motion probably should be more that the board approves of the development of a, or something. Or we just wait until it's a policy.
It can't affect with this vote. You don't need to have the policy in place.
Commissioner Evans?
I was going to say, it also seems that since we are informed by their comments, that we could also ask how they would vote if they were voting, if we did need to have something. I mean, I think there's a way to have their vote known, if there does need to be a policy or something in writing first.
But, yeah, this is a little bit more of the history. I think that the first motion that we had made was to go ahead and give the vote. And then, subsequent to that, we decided, you know, let's explore a larger policy, really, or draft a larger policy, exploring the role of the student representatives on the board, which is, I guess, why we're presenting it in the order that we are here.
Mr. Arwar?
I would assume that their vote would be part of the record.
That is correct.
That's right.
It was, it's non-binding, but we want them to feel more part of us. Mr. Chason?
This is an idea that I brought back from one of the Nellie Mae Cross Site conferences. The people I talked with from the Portland High Schools were saying, what a wonderful thing it is for their student reps to say, you know, why they would vote for something and what their vote would be. And they felt it was really an important part of the process for their boards.
Commissioner Evans?
I did, I mean, I did read through the minutes, and the way student reps are chosen versus, is there some kind of an election? Like, I think that's a key piece of their role and how they come to the board that, I mean, in terms of looking at the vote.
Commissioner Holliday, did you think that that would be probably part of the policy?
Of how students would be placed, would come to be on, that would be, I mean, that was our discussion. That would be part of the policy, is how they came to be on the board.
Yeah. Commissioner Crabb, Al?
Yeah, I think it's about how they would be on the board. I think we talked about, we talked about elections, kind of, that right now is kind of whoever hears about it and signs up, or kind of, like, anointing the next-year-year follower. And all of those feel weird in different ways. And I don't feel like we reached a conclusion, so I'm wondering, I guess, is it up to Peter when he writes the policy? And if we, like, if Peter and I discuss it, is it up to us? Is that something that should be brought forward to the board? And in general, what do people think about how it should happen?
Commissioner Evans?
And I would add to that conversation what we talked about at our retreat, which was that it should be, you should get something more for doing it. You know, could it be independent study hours? Or, like, there's something more legitimate and concrete about, you know, if there was an election, that would lend it to that sort of thing. But that there should be, you know, it's not just the privilege of getting to sit at this table. You should get something for it. And I would think that that would be something that would be proposed in a policy that would go from the policy committee to us for a full vote.
Commissioner Evans?
I would add that I think there's a lot of potential there for more, like, rewards to be added, but also to have more asked of us in kind of an academic sense. Like, I would love, I mean, we could assign credit to it if there were, like, opportunities kind of for reflection, and like, just, there's a lot that could be pulled in with this as kind of the touchdown as of, like, your experience in government. And I just think there's a lot of places we could go with that, and I would love more opportunities to talk about it, so.
Commissioner Crabb?
Yeah, so, at this point, are we just sort of, I don't know if it would just sort of be, there's like a gentleman's bet, right? Is this like a gentleman's motion to give Peter and the, the, I don't even know what. Policy and efficacy, like, our blessing to continue this and bring it back to us?
The motion on the floor is to give them the vote, give them a vote right now. And that, a further policy for how, how the student, the student members are elected, chosen, selected, whether they receive the same honorarium as we all do, or other sorts of remuneration. That would be part of that, that would be part of the policy that would come up. But I think this is separate, to me, the vote is separate from whatever the policy is. We don't have a policy. I think we should get, you know, personally, I think we should get the vote of people sitting at this table. At least let them raise their hand and count those, so that it goes into the record.
And then recorded. Any other questions, comments? Okay, you heard the motion? All who are in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have a seed of a new idea, we're going to be creative. Okay. Anything else, Commissioner Holliday? Okay. Infrastructure and Technology Committee, Commissioner Arwar?
Commissioner Pilsbury, we've met twice since the last board meeting. Why it was canceled, but, so we met in the middle of the month and then just last week. Update on Flynn Construction, the kids are back in the, in A Wing. Everything went very well, there was a great assembly to sort of welcome all the students back. And so we made that, everything came off very well. The geothermal wells are finally online after some issues, but that's been taken care of. And the station will start in May for the C Wing construction, and that'll be completed in, I believe, the end of October, is the estimated date. So anyway, it went, it's a great team that's put together, Chris Gerard and Bill Ford and the contractor, and Terry and everybody that's been involved. It went very smoothly, and the budget, which was really good. We had a request from the, the city has an accessibility committee, a standing committee that's, it's been around a long time, but it sort of died off, and it's sort of been reconstituted. And they've asked for school district participation on that committee. So I volunteered to do that, and the committee is going to get reorganized, I believe, in March. And so I think that's important to get our voice on that committee citywide, because certainly we have some accessibility issues in some of our buildings. And I think the more the public is aware of it, the better off we can be. We've hired an architect, Truex Collins. David Epstein is a partner that will be running this. And this is just to look at some initial work for the renovations here at the high school. And so they'll be attending some planning meetings, assisting the high school staff in preparing an education plan that will lead them to further programming and down the line. They're going to tour some other schools in the vicinity. And they'll also help us prepare for an RFP, sort of go up the pulses for the, for the work that will lead to a bond vote. So anyway, that's, that's, that work has been released, and I'm not sure exactly what the schedule is on it, but it's good to get this started. We've spent most of our time talking about security at the schools. The Colin Lindberg and the staff prepared this report. It's on ITC agenda, very thorough, very, for the amount of time they spent on it. I think it's a very good report, and it goes through all the schools and the weak points and what can be done in a very reasonable way to improve the security at the schools. So there's cost estimates and plans for each of the schools in there. And right now, to, the idea is to allow the public in the schools, but in a controlled manner, and then get badges, announce who they are, and then proceed into the school from there. So that's the general concept behind all these plans. And all the work will amount to about, oh, over $300,000 in costs. So we're looking at funding sources to do that, and hopefully take some of that work off this summer. I do have a motion, and this is regards to Edmonds Elementary School. Now, I'll just read the motion and have a discussion. Because of the unique physical architecture. Because of the unique physical architecture of Edmunds Elementary School and the size of the student body greater than 350, we support the addition of a security monitor position and the exploration of a visitor management system.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Chason?
Edmunds is really the only school that, that our idea of bringing people basically through the front office is, is very difficult to achieve. We have put in a, a doorbell and a camera and a magnetic lock on the door now, and that, that gives them a certain amount of control. There's some interior doors that'll form the vestibule that will be going in over the winter break, and then, then further work to develop an office, again, to take people from the vestibule into a controlled space and then their, their luck into the building from there, so that this position would be for that person to sit at that desk so that the principal and her administrator can stay in the office where they are now, on the second floor.
And is it okay to start asking the question?
Go ahead.
So, as we discussed in an earlier meeting, I forget which one.
Curriculum.
Yeah, it was after the curriculum meeting, that was your meeting. Then he had a second one after that. Okay. Would that person also be able to accomplish other work while they're sitting there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
For both schools, actually, I've asked both principals to look at what their task might be passed on.
Okay. Because I did advocate for this position, I think it's really the way to go. I don't, yeah, I just think you, I don't see how you can do that without it.
Any other questions, Commissioner Crabb?
So what is the, what's envisioned for how that would appear to the students? Are they, like, walking past the security desk with an officer before them, as opposed to, so?
An officer, just a person.
You know, I know, but by appearance sake, what's anticipated, and how that, and how is that going to be presented to the students, that, are they walking past a, you know, a security post before they can enter school, or is it going, how is that going to get integrated well, as if it's a school staff?
Well, I think it'll be a greeter, a Walmart greeter. In the sense that, you know, first of all, this position will start as the doors are locked in the morning, so they won't necessarily be there when the kids are arriving first thing, and when they're, so it'll be during the school day that the doors are locked, a 30-hour position, and it'll be, it'll be a greeter, so if a child comes in with their parent from a doctor's appointment, they'll be greeted and let in. It happens in schools all across the state, so I don't think, I don't think it'll feel traumatic or feel unsafe or scary in some way, it'll just be a friendly person who says, you know, "I'm happy to have you here," and then opens the next door.
Yeah, the students won't have to go through the, go through the chicanery, they'll just go in there.
Right. Yeah, I just, you know, I'm just wanting to make sure as we're doing this, and I'm supportive of it, that it's, you know, not something like, it's a, that it looks like it's an evolution in how entry into the school is done, so it helps the kids, you know, walks them through it, so to speak, as opposed to all of a sudden, there's this dramatic security change.
Any other questions or comments?
Not, not, not specific to the Edmunds question, but after, when we had the ITC meeting where many of the board members came, one of the questions that came up was, you know, where does the city overlap with the district in terms of safety costs, and I'm just wondering if that's.
We're still pursuing that, we don't have that answer yet.
Any other, Commissioner Mattson?
Oh, yeah, cost was my question.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about cost, Commissioner Arar?
Oh, for this position?
Yeah.
For the position?
Yeah.
It'll be three-fourths of $25,000 minus half the school year.
And there's also possibility, and there's also possibility using existing staff.
Rarely, we're going to be using, until we fill the position, we're going to be losing primarily maintenance staff who are on light duty, but there was a concern that it not be different people all the time, that once we have, you know, a person in place, it's better for continuity and stability, but relatively inexpensive in the long run. And, if I may, you know, Edmunds is a unique facility, is, this is not something we anticipate doing at every school, having a staff person, but with offices on the second floor, the type of architecture that exists there, the number of students that are there, and they're really, we looked at a variety of ways of, of not doing this, and it really does seem to be the safest way for that particular school.
You've heard the motion, are you ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much.
And there's, we had some discussion at the curriculum meeting, that we went to.
You hijacked our curriculum.
We'd also.
Although we got the camera crew there.
Voted on some money for a new door here at BHS at the top of the ramp, and so that's going in, and that's almost as much of an accessibility item as it is a security item, so.
Yeah.
I think that was a very good idea. And there's also, then we're also looking along, getting a lot of help from the new fire marshal in Burlington about how we egress from BHS. Right now, the way it's set up, we should only have 1,500 people, like, in the gym when they are at tournament one time, or graduation, we'd exceed that, so, they've come up with some, some very good and inexpensive ideas to relieve that, so that's just a life safety issue that's very important.
Does that only come into play during graduation, or is it, like, basketball, potential basketball games too, or is it?
I think probably, I think there's around 1,500 limit now, which would handle a basketball game, I would think, in any, in anything in the auditorium. I think it's just graduation.
Yeah.
Chris King?
Well, are there any other options to have graduation elsewhere, if that's an issue?
Costly options.
Oh.
Yeah. I mean, by.
Yeah.
Right.
It just seems like there could be things explored, you know, if that's the one event where we're over the far.
It is, it's the primary event.
But I can't say it's necessarily the one event, I mean, I think that our concern is that perhaps we've even been out of code now. I mean, it, it makes sense that it's a, it's a low-cost response that deals with security and also makes sure that we have the appropriate, what's the word I want, the appropriate square footage for.
Yeah, capacity.
Capacity.
And it will be taken care of by this graduation, or relieved to a great deal. Paul gave us, Paul Irish gave us an update on the one-to-one initiative, and he's got a very good presentation, if you want to, it's also on our agenda items, in regards to the slide shown, in regards to a professional development around the one-to-one development, so, take a look at that, it's a very good presentation.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Commissioner Arar? Okay, Commissioner Chason, Curriculum Committee?
Thanks.
Slideshow.
Just two, just two.
Oh, my gosh, visuals.
Nice public.
I like this slide, so I thought I'd put that up while I talked about something else. This is my list from the Steering Committee, the Partnership for Change Steering Committee. The week of March 18th through the 22nd, the mayor's going to move his office to the high school.
Oh.
He promised us this, so he's, he's going to do it.
That's interesting.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what his agenda is, but we'll find out. Rich Nadworny is chairing the Director Hiring Committee, and Jeannie mentioned that the day that we'll have the chance to be involved looks like March 7th. There'll probably be a daytime opportunity and an evening opportunity for board members and other stakeholders, too. The, one of the things that the fellows did was they got this big field trip together, they went to New York City and they checked out 12 schools to see proficiency-based learning and student-centered learning all in action, and they had a wonderful time. They stayed in a hostel and they learned a huge amount about student-centered learning. Then, at our meeting, the implementation teams gave presentations, they presented their goals and objectives, and each and every one of them mentioned in one way or another that, that what they really needed to make their teams work was more student voice, so all the students out there who haven't yet figured out that they need to be a part of this, they should figure that out now and really get involved with the Partnership for Change and Implementation Teams. There's a new round of hiring just starting for the next class of fellows, and like Jeannie said, there were 35 learning conversations already, and there are more in the works. And that presentation we saw about the high school, it was produced by Eric Agnaro, I'm not sure on the last name pronunciation, he was recently hired as the new American Communications Coordinator for the Partnership for Change, and so far, I've seen him recording everything I've been to lately, so, he's very energetic and does a great job, as we saw earlier. So, back to curriculum, in January, we spent the first hour with Mark Aliquio, the Director of the Technical Center, talking about curriculum mapping. The tech center's in year five, I believe he said, of the 10-year accreditation cycle, and so curriculum mapping was some part of the process for him. He brought us very detailed examples from aviation and automotive science and technology and some of the other tech programs, and these documents, they're on our agenda also, they are, oh, and that's the second slide, I have one here that, it was, there was so much information that it sort of overflowed the slide, but he has all this information for every unit, there we go, every unit and every program, and the idea is that since all the programs, they all have different standards, he has these documents where, where the, the big ideas and the essential questions are available for easy access, and then all the details are there also. And then we joined ITC to talk about the facility safety reports, that's it.
Any comments? When's your next meeting? Is it next Tuesday?
Yeah, it's always right after.
It's next Tuesday at 5:00, all right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Diversity and Equity Committee?
So, our last meeting was canceled, so I have nothing to report, since, we haven't had a meeting since our last board meeting, and we have a need to reschedule the meeting because the next anticipated meeting is during, the next scheduled meeting is during school break, so.
You'll notify us as soon as you've come to a decision.
Sure.
Great. Commissioner Mattson, is that going to happen to finance, too?
Yes, I am going to be around, but I will talk to finance.
Okay.
I would like to try to hold it that week, but I just wanted to make that comment.
Okay. The 26th?
Okay. I'm not sure what staff, I know that, I know that there won't be finance staff for you, but Terry will be here, Ellen, and I, we won't have updated reports between now and then?
I don't have my other calendars out, but Kathy just informed me it's Passover as well, which means I would not be able to.
February 26th, Kathy?
And the same with you, Paul, we'll have.
The second Seder's.
Limited to no staff available for your meeting?
Oh, March.
Oh, he's talking about February.
February, yeah, 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 you got to wait. Sorry, that's okay.
Okay.
That's what I get for having a clarion.
So we'll await that decision, okay, okay. Planning, Planning Committee met, and we organized this meeting, we discussed several, I can't remember what we discussed, but one of them.
You actually discussed, you did, oh, you have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yeah, we discussed mostly those two things.
Okay. We discussed basically the, yeah, the regional, okay, the Regional Transportation Study Act, and I'm going to ask the superintendent to explain that.
Sure. One of the things the board has also asked me to do is look at ways that we can have better cost efficiencies or bring more revenue into the district, and so I am asking the board tonight to sign on to a regional transportation study with other school districts in the Chittenden County area, it's a study where, through the use of regional education, districting monies from the state, we will be able to study transportation within the region, school transportation, to see if there are ways to have more efficiencies. For example, even though we use CCTA, it's still, I think it's worthwhile for us to participate and just know the options. For example, there are a number of buses that enter the Burlington, greater Burlington area, for purposes of bringing kids to the tech center, and they might be leaving one community, passing Burlington kids on the way to getting the tech center, that maybe they could pick up, you know, that there might, if we look at where, there are so many different school buses running around with two tech academies right here, or tech centers right here in our region, that there might be ways that we could be more efficient with the way we do transportation. So, I'm asking the board tonight to, and the, and Planning has made a motion, to be part of this study. It doesn't commit us to an outcome, it just says, yes, we're interested in participating in the study.
Okay, I'm going to move to be part of, the motion is move to be part of the Regional Transportation Study Act 158 grant.
I think it's 156.
156, sorry. Commissioner Mattson seconds, is there any questions? Commissioner Mattson? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I now know what I, we talked about, we talked about efficient, how we, how we could get saved monies, and one of them was this, another way was other collaborations or consolidation of services, and that was a general topic. And that then came up, the Winuski School Board's request of the Burlington School Board to join in them in studying possible reconfiguration options, and in that discussion, we discussed how about other districts joining us, and the superintendent has notified other districts, and other districts have, I don't know if we can tell who they are.
You probably shouldn't, but a third district has, is also anticipating joining the study.
So there are other districts that are interested, and one district has said.
Let them break their news.
They will, they will have the same motion on their, at their board meeting, so that's part of, that was part of our discussion, how.
And if I may point out, this motion is slightly different than what Planning worded it, because this was reworded by VSBA, so you might want to, you know, make sure that you're comfortable with it.
Okay. And the reason that VSBA gave us this rewording was because they have been designated to be the ones to.
Help Winuski.
Sponsor this and help with this. So the motion is, the Burlington, the Burlington Board of School Commissioners agrees to join with Winuski in studying possible reconfiguration options as required by the Agency of Education, including possible connections with the Burlington School District. Is there a second? Commissioner Mattson? Okay. Any questions or discussions? Commissioner Mattson?
I would just like to add that, I'd actually been doing some thinking about the issue that was brought up tonight by one of the members of the public regarding the fact that under the, under the new regime, that money is not following the child and school choice, and some of the issues that that will bring up between districts, and I think that initiatives like this are really good ways for us to show that we're actually looking at this issue in some way that isn't only driven by what the state is mandating.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. You heard the motion, all those in favor of the motion, please say, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We also discussed all of the other act legislative act to see that Jean presented in her report. I don't know why, I forgot at that time. Okay, approval of the consent agenda items, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Chason, Commissioner Truman seconds, you have a hard copy of the consent agenda, as well as copies of the minutes that are on our board docs. Is it, is there a question, Commissioner Arar?
I had a correction on the.
Okay.
ITC minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Trump, your point is out. Item 5A, this is in regards to the city's Accessibility Committee and its General Assembly Committee, Mr. Montefusco, and it should be Ralph Montefusco.
Okay.
Instead of Frank Montefusco.
We have a person who is running for our commission who is very interested in being our representative. That's board representative. Okay, just to give you, we're, we're still looking for a representative from the board?
Yes.
Okay.
For, for which?
One of the, one of the candidates for school commission said she would love to be on that committee.
Okay.
Okay?
Oh, right.
Right. Okay. Uh, any other? Commissioner Jason?
I asked that we take the January 8th minutes on the board meeting, because I have no great permission over it.
Okay. So they will be deleted from the consent agenda, the January 8th board meeting minutes. Anything else? Or, no, they would be taken off, then. Any other changes? All those in favor of the consent agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Um, we do need to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations. Can I have a motion to go into executive, Commissioner Arard, commissioned by Commissioner Deladuka? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.